Hello, welcome to the Brian Hornback Experience. It's episode one thirty-one. And as you know, we're right on the verge of early voting for the city of Knoxville. Um, yes, the dogs barking with the city of Knoxville election coming up. Uh, early voting starts August the ninth, runs through the twenty-fourth with the primary election on August the twenty-ninth. The August ninth, August twenty-fourth, primary election, August twenty-ninth. Um, we have, uh, one of the candidates running for city council at large. Seat C, we have none other than Matthew Best. Matthew, how are you?
I'm doing pretty well. Uh, busy these days and a little bit sleepy.
Yeah, well, I hear, I hear congratulations are in order. You had your first, well, your, your wife had your first child on, uh, on Monday, but I'm sure that you were, uh, you were involved because, because I've, I've sat in on two of those. Uh, thirty-two and twenty-seven years ago, so.
Well, glad you gave her the credit. She's been amazing.
Right. Oh, absolutely. So I'm sure he's sleeping through the night already, right?
Uh, not quite. Probably not nearly as bad as it could be, so we're not, you know, we will take our blessings as we get.
Absolutely. Well, uh, you know, I guess we kinda need to understand who Matthew Best is. Um, I know, I know you've been in and around Knoxville for a little while. You, uh, were the campaign manager a couple of years ago for Dr. John Butler when he was successful in his, uh, in, in his effort to become the, um, uh, school board member for the first district. But kinda let us know about, uh, how long Matthew's been in Knoxville? And I know you run the change center, so kinda give us all the, all the great details about your background and, and coming to Knoxville.
Sure, absolutely. Yeah, I've been in Knoxville sixteen years. I came here from Memphis, uh, came when I was seventeen to go to college at the University of Tennessee in Knoxville. Graduated there, uh, three and a half years. I've been here ever since. Um, for me, I live in East Knoxville. Um, I, I run the change center, as you said. We do, uh, first jobs and workforce development for high school kids. You know, the change center was, was started several years ago, um, to help do violence interruption work, provide safe space for kids, but also provide, um, kids with jobs. And that was because that's what kids said they wanted, you know, every so often we had crises, we have, um, kind of spouts of spurts of violence with young people. And, and we have, you know, meetings and we have, uh, we, we trying to figure out what can we do, what could we have done, what do we, should we do? And finally, a few years ago, people decided to ask the kids and the kids said, we need a place to hang out and we need a place to work.
Right.
And so that's why we do what we do. We work, we hire kids, the children's fourteen, and it's a, it's a really awesome job. I really love the work I get to do with the kids. Our work with are incredible.
Now, how long? How long have you been at the change center?
Uh, I've been there since March of twenty twenty-two.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, so I'm fairly new. Uh, before that, worked at Johnson University. I ran the scholarship, actually they call it youth theology institute where I taught kids about faith, justice, how those things go together. Uh, then I also did the, uh, work for Johnson University. I was the first, uh, director of multicultural student affairs there. And, and then prior to that, I worked with kids in East Knoxville, Ramal Youth Foundation. Uh, and then before that, I was a campus pastor. So I worked at UT, ran a fellowship of, of college students, uh, doing ministry there in and around campus. But, uh, so my whole professional career has been doing ministry, we're service, we're probably working with young people in some capacity. So, uh, that's a little about kind of who I am. Probably the thing I'm most proud of in recent years is, uh, we had some, some, some fellow neighbors, came together and started the Austin East Community Foundation. So we've wanted to kind of fill some of those gaps at Austin East. Um, and so we've raised and donated a hundred thousand dollars to Austin East the last two years.
Wow.
To help kind of supplement some of the, not just the traditional learning stuff, but some of the extracurricular activities, some of the parent supports. Just making sure the teachers, the administrators there have funds to do the things they need to do to best serve kids. So that, I'm probably more proud of that than just by anything recently.
So in, in my limited research, I understand that you're a fairly, uh, impressive dancer. You want to tell us about that?
Yeah, I, I have had a collective upbringing and, uh, done a lot of different stuff. You know, I ran track at UT, was the athlete, which I think is a, uh, is a pretty good metaphor for my life. Is I, I, I may not be an expert in one thing, but I like being pretty good at, at a bunch of stuff. My life is a lot more fun that way. Um, growing up, I was a dancer for a ballet company in Memphis called New Ballet Ensemble. Um, I did musical theater, I, you know, a lot of folks don't know, I've got a black background. I've, I've literally done some of every, just everything you could do. Uh, you know, and then played basketball in high school, coached basketball here, coached, I mean, I, I, I just like doing as many things as possible. I love kind of being, being well-rounded. It's a lot of fun for me. So yeah, dance was a big part of my life, uh, when I was younger.
Well, the, uh, the good thing about doing a lot of things is it's, you don't have much time for idle work, right?
Heck, yeah. Well, and I think that's, you know, that's a, you know, I don't know if you did it on purpose, but that's a great, uh, kind of segue or great transition in terms of kind of, why I like the work I do at the change center. Kids that work, kids that have, you know, that are busy, they stay out of trouble. They, they, they get a chance to think about their future and, and they, they get a chance to, to excel and then think about what's next for them. And so, you're right, the idle, uh, idle hands are definitely, uh, workshop, I think is the phrase.
Right. Now, I understand you might have some family that has some, uh, political, um, some political history or some, uh, your mother may have served in elective office.
She did. So I worked on my first campaign when I was nine years old.
Wow, that's cool.
My mom ran for county judge. She was a general social school judge in Memphis, in Cheltenham County, uh, did that for eight years. Uh, the problem, the thing about that that I'm super proud of, for five or eight years, she saw nothing but domestic violence cases. And so she, I learned a whole lot from her, from being in a courtroom about advocacy, about victims' rights, about, you know, just what does it look like to be, uh, an ally, kind of before folks would really use that word in that way. And so, or, or as preeminent do now. And so I learned a whole lot from her and kind of her public service. And so, uh, yeah, she did that. Uh, I, I got a chance to help campaign with Harold Ford Jr. That same year, nineteen ninety-eight, when I was, uh, when I was a kid. And, uh, and, uh, had the pleasure, I actually talked with him recently, as I kind of embarked this term, he can share with me some of his, uh, his wisdom.
Well, you know, it's funny. It's funny, Harold Ford Jr. And I have a little bit of history because in two thousand six, obviously, he ran for, um, US senate against, uh, Bob Corker. And I was, uh, at that time, I was a, a former school board member, but I was also the Knox County Republican Party chairman. And so, um, we, we got in, and so, actually, he and I was on an airplane coming back from somewhere and it might've been Memphis. And he and I talked in, in the, in the, um, in the airport as we were coming back. And, you know, the funny thing is Harold Ford Jr. Always understood, uh, the role I provided as, as Republican Party chairman. He understood his role as a senate candidate. And so we could have good cordial conversations one-on-one, but he also knew that when he was on talk radio, that, uh, I would call in and, and, uh, you know, he'd say, okay, Mr. Chairman, be, be nice to me. But, um, you know, he, um, was just a, um, he was just a, um, you know, he, he under, he understood the process. And, uh, and the only other Ford that I really knew was, um, was his aunt, Ophelia, when she, uh, when she had to fill in for a little while in the state senate. And, and she and I would have some, just some phenomenal, just never talked about politics, never talked about anything. But we would just, we would be walking around, um, uh, out on the sidewalk at the Capitol. We would just have some phenomenal conversations. So, um, Harold Ford Jr. And Ophelia Ford were just, uh, were the only two people that I really knew in the Ford family. But, um, totally, totally, um, just good memories and, and really appear to be good people. Um, but, you know, obviously, um, I had to help elect Bob Corker because that was my job as party chairman.
Of course. Well, but, but what you bring up though is I think something that's worth talking about is that, for me, that's why the city, uh, elections and why the city office makes a lot of sense for me. Because, yes, we know where people typically vote. We know where people are registered. That is public knowledge.
Right.
At least with it being nonpartisan, you know, that at least eliminates one barrier to working with somebody, right? You know, it's already hard enough to get folks to get on the same page, to get some things done. And so at least at the city level, we don't have to worry about that DNR thing, uh, to stop folks from having, uh, from, you know, from having dialogue and to try to get some things done. And so I, I, I really appreciate that about our city elections and I, and I hope they stay that way. I'm sure most folks will, I think, uh, most folks in the city would agree with that.
People, I, I, I may or may not, I've been doing the blog for eight, almost eighteen years. Uh, been doing the podcast, you know, it started kind of slow, um, a couple of years ago. But, um, now I'm into a hundred and thirty-one episodes. But, um, you know, I've told this story before and I, I won't, I won't prolong it because this really ain't about me. It's more about you and city council. But, you know, when I ran for school board, it was nonpartisan. It's only, um, since the legislature changed that a couple of years ago. We've already gone through one school board cycle where it was Republican Democrat. And I can argue both, I, I can, I can argue both sides of any issue. But, but, you know, when I ran for, uh, school board back in, uh, ninety-nine and two thousand, um, it was nonpartisan. And the individual I was running against was vice chairman of the board. He was, had served eight years, uh, when I decided to take him on. He was a Republican, uh, but, you know, I showed up at the fifth district Democrat club meeting, which that time met at the Ryans, which is now Hibachi Grill buffet or something. And, um, and, you know, I, I just stood up and said, hey, I'm running for school board, you know? And, and they said, hey, can you come back and be our speaker next month? And, and I did. And, um, you know, the question was asked, and, and I was somewhat prepared for it. It was, you know, are you a Democrat? And I said, no, I'm not a Democrat. I said, I'm a Republican. I've, I've been active in politics since I was sixteen years old. Uh, um, but the choices you have are two Republicans. You have a Republican that doesn't care that you meet here at Ryans and, uh, isn't going to come to your meeting, and then you have me. And, you know, I really met some great folks who many, several of them have, have passed on because they were older. But, um, you know, for that reason, you know, I kind of enjoyed the, um, the, the nonpartisan aspect of school board. Now, uh, it also cuts both ways because in two thousand, we had a, um, we had a contested Republican primary for president because the school board elections, uh, for the seat that I ran for is during the presidential primary. And, um, and then in two thousand four, uh, the Democrats had a hotly contested, so there were more Democrats voting. Uh, and so, you know, that does have a tendency to cut, that does have a tendency to cut. But, you know, I knew that when I got elected in two thousand, I had four years. And so I feel good about what I did in four years. And then I went on to be Republican Party chairman. And now I've done this thing called a blog and a podcast. So it is what it is. But now let's, uh, so, um, your race, seat C, um, is probably the one that's going to have some impact on, uh, August twenty-ninth. Because in seat A, there are three people, but one that's really not raising money and really not, uh, because of some, apparently some family issues, can't really campaign. So, uh, we, we pretty much can kind of see who the, who the two are going to be coming out of August twenty-ninth. Uh, in seat B, we have two candidates, and so we know that they're going to make it on, um, August twenty-ninth. But in your race, it's you and, and two other folks. Um, and, um, one, one, one of the three unfortunately is, is going to get eliminated on, um, on August the twenty-ninth. And unfortunately, and then in the fifth district, Charlie Thomas is unopposed. And, but in the other two races, the one for mayor and for municipal judge, if somebody gets fifty percent plus one, it's over. So your race is the one that's going to have some, some implication on somebody. So, uh, just kind of talk about, um, as you looked at it, uh, kind of what, what convinced you that, uh, seat C was the one to run for? And, and, um, and, um, and how you think that, that your leadership, uh, is, is different, uh, in the next four years from your other two opponents?
Yeah, that's, that's, I appreciate that. I think, you know, I'll be honest, I, my wife and I really thought about this, uh, for, I mean, it's probably took me four months to decide if we were going to do this or not. So, uh, I think technically I was the first person to publicly announce, but I was definitely the last person to, to jump in the race, right?
Right.
It's kind of crazy.
Right.
Um, but, uh, for us, the timing made sense. Now, we'll, we'll admit, we did not know we were pregnant in time. So, uh, still factor that in there, but, uh, the timing makes sense for us. Uh, and it's funny too, my wife, before we got married, she, this is when I was not even considering public office. Literally, I remember we got engaged and she said, you know, if you want to run for office one day, I, I support you. I said, what are you talking about? Like, there's no way I want to do that.
Right.
But for me, uh, I just have seen how influential our city officials are in, like, really things that affect people's day-to-day lives, right? Um, you know, people don't, you know, unfortunately, we see such low turnout in local elections, but you have these nine city councils, there's one mayor that can make a decision. And your life is different and sometimes as quick as two weeks, right? Like, there's a quick turnaround on some of these things. And it really affects our quality of life here in the city. And so for me, I really think that I can offer a bit of a different perspective than what is typically offered on our city council. Um, we don't always think about our kids and their families on the front end of things, right? We, we catch them on the back end after something happens, after there's an incident, after there's some tragedy sometime even. And we say, what could we have done? What should we have done? What can we do going forward? I think that our city can look a whole lot different if we make decisions on the front end that are directly thinking about, uh, kids and their families, right? And so for me, everything comes from that lens. So even when we talk about economic empowerment, economic development in neighborhoods, you know, we need, if we want strong families, if we want kids' lives to be changed, we need their parents to be able to make decent wages, right? We need their neighborhoods to, to, to have investments. We need to see, uh, infrastructure in places that typically don't get thought about till it's too late. And so for me, that's kind of the reason why I'm running. And, and I think this, this seat has made sense for me because, uh, I think it allows me to be authentically who I am. It allows me to, to kind of, uh, prop up the experience of God in terms of, uh, being a, uh, community, doing community development work and in terms of doing nonprofit work. Uh, it allows me to share the experiences of people in my community and people that I've worked with, you know? Uh, and then too, I got asked by people that I trust and I respect, and I got asked by my neighbors to run for, for this seat, to run in this race this year. Um, that was the thing that really was, uh, that even got me considering it because it was not on my radar. I gotta acknowledge, I can admit that it was not on my radar. But as I heard from folks in my community that said, Matthew, we really would love for you to consider trying to represent us. Uh, and we think that you're the right person for it. That, you know, that at least got the wheels going. It still took me four months to decide I was going to do it, but that at least got me to consider it. So, um, after some starting process for, you know, on our family's part, we felt like it made sense and, and I have not regretted the decision since then. You know, this entire campaign process has been so just wonderful for me. Like, I love door knocking. I love talking to folks in the, in these neighborhoods. And what's great for me is that this is an at-large seat. So it's not just me working on East Knoxville, places where I'm kind of familiar because folks know me from Coach at Austin East and know me from the change center. They know me from WJBE on the radio every day, you know, I do some filler stuff for them. But, but it's allowed me to be in Sequoia Hills, to be in West Hills, to be in North Knoxville, to be in South Knoxville and get to hear, uh, the concerns of people throughout the city. And I also acknowledge that in that large seat means that no matter what I do, someone's going to be mad, right?
Right, right.
Neighborhoods have different concerns and priorities. And so I think it allows me to kind of think about the city from a big picture perspective and say, how can we make sure that the city lives up to what we know it can be? You know, I know a lot of people like to kind of focus, especially during campaigns, on, on, on negatives. What, what do we need to fix? What's broken? What, what, what am I going to change? And, and, and those things are important. But I think for me, I am really hopeful. I, I, you know, you never would have, I never would have been in a million years that I'd be in Knoxville sixteen years now. And I will be, and Knoxville will be home for me. And I am really excited about what Knoxville can and will look like going forward. I just think we just have to have the right people in place that are willing to work together and willing to listen to, to the citizens. Uh, and willing to put in the time and effort to kind of push us to where we want to be. So, uh, I know you didn't ask for a stump speech, but I think that answers your question.
Well, no, I mean, that's, that's, that's kind of, that's, that's kind of what I, um, I'll, I'll be honest with you because I've been active, uh, in, in politics since, uh, since I was sixteen, which unfortunately, uh, I'll admit now is forty years because I'm fifty-six. Um, you know, I, the, the thing that I did when, when I, when I started the blog and then now that I'm doing the podcast and the blog, you know, I respect the fact that people put their name on the ballot. And when you put your name on the ballot, you, uh, what a lot of people don't understand is, uh, you become what they call a, a, a public official. Uh, and so, you know, you, you open yourself up to all kinds of criticism, whether it's, um, valid criticism, uh, not valid criticism. But, you know, I, I just see a lot of times, um, in, in, in elections, whether they be local, state, or even federal. You know, people put their name on the ballot and the media, uh, which has diminished over the last three, four, or five years, um, doesn't give everyone a chance. And I think that if anybody, um, has the wherewithal to say, you know what, I'm willing to open myself up to scrutiny. Uh, I'm willing to open myself up to people who don't like me. And yeah, I've got more than my fair share of those people. Um, then, uh, you know, I think everybody ought to be heard. And so that's why, uh, when I started thinking about podcasts, that's, and, and that's why I reach out to every candidate and give every, every candidate opportunity. And that's, some don't take it and some do. But, you know, I, I think everybody that puts their name on the ballot has, has a right to be heard. Um, and I'll be honest with you, um, what I've seen in your race, because there are three of you, uh, three of you that, that all have, um, pretty good reputations, pretty well-known throughout the city. Uh, it's been a very, um, it's been a very professional, very, um, you know, I, there's not, as far as I can tell, there's not been any personal barbs thrown at anybody. Uh, in the times that you all have been together, has, has, has that been, has that been the case as well?
It's been the case for sure, and I appreciate that. And, and I'll be honest with you, even if it had been, there are certain things that I'm just not willing to do, right?
Right.
My, my reputation matters that much to me. Um, and, and I'll be honest, i- if, if mudslinging leads to a win, then I, I'm not willing to do that, right? And, and that's, I think that it does. I think, I think the average voter is a lot smarter than that, um, and, and, and they kind of can see through a lot of that stuff. So I've been grateful for that. Um, you know, it, it's interesting. I just want to jump back to, you know, you talked about you got started when you were sixteen. I, I forgot to mention, I guess I didn't know if it was worth you not, but when I was sixteen, I was a, a, a boy state delegate here in Tennessee.
Oh, wow.
And I was a boys' nation delegate as well. So I'm one of the two people they picked from Tennessee to go to DC that summer.
That's fantastic.
I got to, uh, be in the White House with George W. Bush in two thousand and six, which was a, a fun, uh, the, at that time, I thought I wanted to be US senator. Uh, that journey didn't last very long, but, uh,
Hey, you never, you, you nev, you never know, man, because when I got started, when I got started at sixteen, uh, the Republicans were, uh, the super minority party. And, uh, and today we're the super majority party. And, uh, tho, those folks that, um, that are part of the super majority, uh, don't have the historical knowledge I have of what it is to be the super minority party. So, uh, you know, I may, I may hold the position of a state executive committee member for the Republican Party and, and I might be all Republican. But, um, I remember what it was like to be the super minority party and, and some folks need to, some folks need to understand that, but, you know, it's.
And what I was, sorry, I know we're talking about larger policies here for a second, but what I would gather is that you, you, I would, I would bet that you probably knew who on the Democratic side would at least work with you in the office, that you felt like you had the chance to get some things done, right?
Oh, absolutely.
So, and, and I think that matters, right? I think those things matter when it comes to our elected officials in our office doing exactly what it is we need to. You know, you talk about being a public figure and I mentioned this the other night at a, at a campaign function, that, uh, it was interesting, right? I had Mayor Harrow at the function and Victor Ash was there. I don't think I was there to support him necessarily, but I think he was there just to see what was going on. And then we had a diversity of folks in the room at this function. And, and I said to the folks there, I said, listen, this may sound naive, but I, I need there to be a difference between being a public servant and being politician, right?
Right.
Those two things have to be now. You may not say, you may say that, that same or whatever, but I need those things to be true. And I think that if you're a public servant, then your, your voters look different. I think the way you operate looks different. Uh, and I think that you, if you take the public servant approach to heart, anybody's willing to work with you. Because at the end of the day, nobody gets in these positions that doesn't want to actually see good things for Knoxville, right?
Right.
Um, you know, the, the whole best for Knoxville thing on the can, on, on the campaign is obviously a part of my name. And plus I didn't want to use the one that my mom used. She always used me to be the best choice. But, but that really means something to me because it's not about whether something's my idea, not about whether I get my way. It's not about whether it's I get exactly what I want. It's about whatever is best for the citizens of Knoxville. There may be something that I've thought one way on and I ended up being wrong about it. I'm willing to say I'm happy that I was wrong about this if it ends up benefiting Knoxvilleians. You know what I'm saying? Like, that's, that's the, that's the approach you have to have if you're really going to do this and if we're actually going to see some things change.
Right. Well, we've had a great conversation, um, and, uh, and I don't want, I, I don't, um, we might, we may have to, I may have to get you back and we can continue to talk about some, some of this stuff. But, absolutely. But let's, uh, let's talk about, let's kind of finish this up and just talk about what, what you think is, um, the main issues, uh, that the city needs to address over the next four years. Cause, uh, if you, uh, when, when you make it through the primary and then you make it through the general, then you got to start in about the middle of December, you got to serve for four years. So what do you think that, what do you think the key issues are, uh, facing the city over the next four years? And, and how would your service, uh, best represent the city as a whole because it is at-large?
Sure. I think, I think the key issues everybody knows about, right? We've, we've got a, we're a housing crisis, right? Our, 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 our housing market is unstable, to put it mildly, right? We don't have enough units, the, the, the units that are available. A lot of folks are priced out of. And so we, we've got to figure out some kind of, we're going to get more units throughout the city. This is the thing that I think about as an at-large candidate. That's a problem that only gets solved if you spread it throughout the city, right? We don't solve that problem by putting only affordable housing in one neighborhood.
Right, you can't, you can't, you can't, you can't put them all in Mechanicsville, right?
That's what they, oh, don't get me started.
I understand.
Sorry, I meant the mechanics. So, and yes, I'm with you. So let's not just keep putting affordable units in these spots. We need the entire city to kind of take the, the brunt of this. So what that means is, is if all of our neighborhoods, if all of our, our, our districts kind of say, you know what? Yes, there might be some changes that happen in our, in our neighborhood that we don't exactly want. But if every neighborhood is feeling that and it ultimately gets us to solving our problem, that's the approach we have to take, right? And, and I think the other thing we have to do is going to change it when we talk about it. You know, do we, we need affordable housing, yes. But I also think we need to talk about workforce housing, right? So let's say you got somebody that gets a job, that's a decent paying job, that it's out in Turkey Creek. Well, they probably can't, you know, say they got transportation issues. It's hard to get a bus from where affordable housing is, right, to somewhere in Turkey Creek. You need workforce housing that's going to be close enough for people to use public transport or make it easy for folks to get to, get to their job. So we need workforce housing throughout the city that makes sense for folks. And, and I think there's ways we can do it without disrupting neighborhoods in ways that are catastrophic, right? If we could ever to put more units on these public corridors that, that are already busy, I think that might be something we got to look at. I, I definitely applaud the city's commitment to spending fifty billion dollars on more affordable housing. I think that's a big part of it, but the problem only gets solved if you do affordable and market rate housing at the same time because we just need more units. Uh, so that's, that's one thing I think I'd love to tackle and address. Uh, the other thing is, I would love to see, um, uh, more equity in the way we decide to invest in our neighborhoods, especially as it relates to infrastructure. Um, you know, I live in East Knoxville and East Knoxville, there's a dirt to economic development in East Knoxville, um, from the private sector. And so we got to figure out what are the ways that we can entice and incentivize and get folks to, to, to spend money in East Knoxville in a way that is not going to like move people out, but in a way that's going to provide value, provide services, provide, uh, offerings to the people that already live here. You know, uh, you know, we, there are a lot of things like, you know, in our neighborhood, uh, hospitals, uh, primary care doctors, uh, grocery stores, right? So what do we do to ensure that there's equity in, in, in our neighborhoods and that folks in every part of the city have access to the things they need? Without having to get a bus out of, out of the neighborhood, without having to catch an Uber, right? With like, we, we have some issues there. And so I'd love to see, um, some more equity in the way that we invest economically in, in certain neighborhoods. It's not just East Knoxville, there's pockets of South Knoxville, right? There's pockets of North Knoxville that need, uh, that need to see some, some economic, uh, development happen that's going to better serve their citizens. So what does it look like for us to incentivize and to, to entice folks to come do that work that's going to create better quality of life? Those are two of the main things that I'm, that I, that I'm taking through, uh, as it relates to, uh, the next four years.
Well, that sounds, yeah. Oh, yeah, homeless. Yep.
Which everybody's talking about and, and it's a multifaceted issue. Uh, I'm excited to hear that the, uh, that the city administration is going to host this summit on homelessness. I think they announced that at Justice Knox earlier this year. Uh, so excited to see what comes out of that. Um, but that's a multifaceted approach that you got to take in order to fix the issue. It's going to require, uh, work on the mental health side of things. It's going to require work on the law enforcement side of things. It's going to require work on the housing side of things. And so, uh, we got to be working in conjunction to make sure we've got a plan in place that allows us to approach those things in ways that make sense. Uh, it's not going to work if we just throw one thing, throw eggs all in one basket, you know? If you just put more units, that doesn't solve the problem because you've got mental health addiction issues that need to be, uh, dealt with in order for folks, uh, to feel comfortable and to be in a place to move into those units if they're not able, right? So this has got to be a comprehensive way to attack this.
Absolutely. Well, Matthew, uh, it looks like, uh, looks like you're, um, you're well on your way. Uh, I know the campaign, uh, you know, sometimes these campaigns start out, uh, way, way out, uh, six months, eight months. I mean, the presidential has been going on for nearly the entire term of the current president. But, uh, you know, this one is, is, is getting heated up. Uh, everybody, um, a- as I said before, um, early voting is August the ninth through the twenty-fourth with, uh, the primary election on August twenty-ninth. So I will, uh, I will let you, uh, make your last pitch, uh, to the listeners and the viewers of the Brian Hornback Experience, episode one thirty-one. And we'll wish you well. And we'll wish you well, uh, but go ahead and, uh, finish out. And, uh, again, I appreciate you being on here.
Yeah, thanks for having me. Last thing I'll say is make sure you go and vote, get folks out there to vote. Uh, I, I, I really would love to get your vote, you know, Matthew Bass, I would love to get your vote, uh, for city council at large, seat C. Because I think I have what it takes to bring folks to the table and to make sure that our city really, uh, lives up to what we know it can be. I genuinely want whatever is best for Knoxville, whatever's gonna serve those people, whatever is gonna, uh, provide ac- access to services for those people, whatever is gonna provide high-quality life for those people. I want to work hard with our legislators, our other council members to get that done and I want to work hard with you. Uh, this only works if we collaborate together and that's why I'm really running on this idea of collaborative governance. That, that if we work together, if we really put the issues on the table, I believe that we can come up with some solutions to these problems. Um, they, they get us close to where we want to be. So please consider me, uh, Matthew Bass for at-large seat C.
All right. Good luck and we'll talk to you soon, Matthew.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. You too.